Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled city council meeting for April 26, 2021. At this time, I will call our meeting to order, and we will start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will take any motions anybody wants to offer up for the approval of the agenda for tonight. Everybody's had a chance to look it over.
This is Krogman. Move the agenda.
Second, Sullivan.
Who's seconded it?
Sullivan.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Any other discussion, comments? If not, we'll move it over to Administrator Krugel for a roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Krogman. Councilmember Lozey.
Aye.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Kirby.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda. All items on consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. All items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. At this time, I would like Administrator Krugel, if you want to do a brief review of all these.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kirby. We have some revised city council minutes with just the clarification as far as presence and absence for April 12th that was sent out this morning. We have disbursement approvals through April 26, 2021. Couple items to note there, the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, we had our first half payment for our auto insurance. That pumper truck that was approved by council, we actually are receiving that three months ahead of schedule, so that's kind of interesting. So, the crew, Chief Wenich and a couple other officers are planning to go and pick that up from Wisconsin here, I believe, at the end of the week. So they're going to bring that check if approved tonight when they pick up the truck, potentially a little bit early. And then we have some engineering costs for South Main Street that were in there. We also, item C, we have the Arbor Day proclamation, and that day is proclaimed to be April 30th of this year. One of the reasons why we do this, it's required to continue our Tree City USA. I believe we're 33 years into it, where we have been 33 years on Tree City USA. We have an MMPA statement on electric rate impacts. If everyone remembers, there was some wonky weather down in the southern United States in February that really kind of sent the natural gas market into a frenzy. And you might have heard on the news, some electric utilities had to really pass some of those costs along to their customers. One thing that MMPA wanted to send a public statement out is that those rates, because of some planning and some contingencies that we had, we won't see a rate impact because of that in MMPA or any of our electric rates. So getting that in the public record. And then also, the last item E, the water tower extended hours. The request for this is to work on weekends from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This is extended hours, kind of letting them start a little bit earlier on a weekend day. So typically, you can only start at 9:00, 9:00 a.m. on a weekend. We're requesting that, or they're requesting that they can start at 7:00 a.m. And that's just to kind of expedite the project. As you may be aware, a lot of these crews, especially with this water tower project, are coming in from out of state. So when they're here, they're working, and they want to work and get that done. You know, they want to work when they have the ability to work. So that's all I have. That's the consent agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Jasper, can you just clarify one more time? Which truck is the fire department picking up early?
It's the pumper truck. So the one that was approved while, before the tanker. So the tanker truck we just ordered about a month ago. And the pumper truck was ordered about four months ago, five months ago. Actually, no, I think it was in November, sorry, November of 2020. They said that they were going to get it in September of 2021, but it is going to be ready early. So it'd be the pumper truck. So Chief Wenich is already working on some of the vehicle replacements and disposing of some of those older vehicles. I believe one of them was sold at Pioneer Power. We have a very old 1960 fire truck that kind of sits out there. Somebody purchased that. So, but we're working on disposing of those vehicles that we no longer need.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Anybody? Well, that is, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move, Sullivan.
Second.
Thank you, Member Sullivan. Thank you, Member Swanberg. It's been, motion's been made by Sullivan, seconded by Swanberg. I'll turn it over. Oh, any other discussion, comments before I turn it over to Administrator Krugel? And it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozey.
Aye.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Kirby.
Aye.
Thank you.
Public comment. If you wish to participate in public comment, you must sign up prior to the commencement of the meeting. Negative remarks about city staff or employees is not allowed. You will have a time limit of five minutes to comment. The total public comment period shall be 30 minutes for non-agenda items and 30 minutes per agenda item. Disruptive and disorderly behavior will not be tolerated. Excuse me. Administrator Krugel, do we have anybody signed up for public comment at all?
Mayor Kirby, we did not, or I did not receive anybody pre-sign up for public comment. We do have four individuals in attendance. I'll give them a little bit of time to raise their hand if they would like to participate in public comment. And if they do, I can open up their microphone and they can participate. So maybe give them a few more seconds, and if nobody raises their hand, we can move on.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand, Mayor Kirby.
Okay, thank you. With that, we can move on to the regular agenda. First agenda item is 6A, County and State Aid CASA 36 Improvement Project. Administrator Krugel, you'll start us off, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of the city council. Before you, we have Corey Beanfang tonight to present on this project. And really what we're doing is the first step in what some have become familiar with, the 429 process for these types of projects. There's, it's a very, very detailed outline as far as what we need to do as a city to be able to levy assessments on property owners. And feasibility study is the first step. What you have included in your packet is the feasibility study. So it's a pretty large project. With the county, you'll see some of the funding breakdowns. Roughly 45% of the costs of the project are covered by the county, and the rest is covered by the city. There are a couple offshoot projects that Corey will talk about a little bit with the parking lot. And I can address those questions. I did receive a couple of questions that were similar about the parking lot. So once we get to that point, I can talk a little bit about that. But I will turn it over to Corey, Mr. Beanfang, to present on the project.
All right, thank you, Jasper. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. If you don't mind, Jasper. So tonight, we're talking about the CASA 36 project. And I thought, before we got into any detail, just recapture the project area. Jasper did a good job kicking it off. But it's really focused around County State Aid 36, which is on the south portion of the city. I guess it'd be on the south and the western portion. So it, this project is going to commence right at the south city limit on 36, or approximately 3rd Street. And it's going to carry then up through South Main Street to Ferry Street. And then 36 makes a jog, and it actually continues then all the way up the hill past City Hall to Forest Street. So the project is going to cover the full extent of 36 there, South Main and all of Ferry Street. And then as Jasper noted, you know, with the emphasis of the reconnection of South Main Street, an acknowledgement that some of the storm sewer for this 36 corridor extends down the hill pass on Ferry there, past the Green Mill, and exits then under the tracks and into the river. There's a project benefit to add that one block of Ferry Street. And then also, as part of the South Main Street reconnection and some of the reconfiguring there on the north end of that, and how you access the west parking lot, we believe, you know, at a staff level, that there's value to address the west parking lot, we're referring to it as, which is that portion there from Ferry to Bridge Street. So all of that parking lot area on the west side makes some sense. It's connected, obviously, just from a, you know, a close proximity standpoint. But the storm sewer, the parking lot ties into the storm sewer from Ferry that's coming from 36. So just a lot of interconnection here in this, you know, I guess, kind of central Ferry main connection intersection area. If you don't mind, Jasper. So as, as I've been doing here in these past project updates, I just feel it's really helpful to go back and kind of recapture a timeline. And on 36, we can go back a number of years here to really identify and start the conversation of needing improvements. We were able to trace it back to 2014, really be in that first tangible date. The county proceeded with an improvement project south of the city limits. Some may recall, remember, it was a reclaimed project. And at that time, there was intention to actually take care of the city portion as well, proceed with the full reconstruct, replace underground utilities. And our understanding is the city wasn't in a position financially to proceed at that time, even though the need was there. So the project within city limits was passed on. Bringing us then to last summer, you know, identifying and working through the process of the 10-year street utilities plan, where we adopted that plan. And this CASA 36 project was the first one, or the first next project after the big turnback project, identifying a build year of 2022. So taking that identification, we approached council and got approval to start conversations with the county. That happened right away in June. And some folks may recall then, at the end of 2020, we were able to, you know, complete and adopt the approved memo of understanding, which talks about the cost participation agreement, really sets that in writing. And then at that time, was the confirmation of the turnback at CASA 37, which is that stretch of North Main to 5th Street. So then, from that, I guess, you know, approval of the memo of understanding, really solidifying the city-county participation, it led us then into the delivery with that first step being the feasibility report. That's not so much significant on the county side, but it's incredibly significant on the city side based on that 429 process. And it really is step one. So we ordered that in early '21, and now before you tonight, are bringing that report completed for consideration of acceptance. And then that, part of that acceptance then is to order and hold the first public improvement hearing, which is the first required meeting with the public. And I'll get into that in a great detail tonight. But so a little over a year in planning here based on the CIP and a number of years of that based on project need. If you don't mind, Jasper. So the 36 corridor itself, consisting of Main Street and Ferry there, it is noticeably in disrepair from a roadway standpoint. I think the folks that are driving it, it kind of has a consistent feel of what, you know, previously Ferry and Elmwood did pre-turnback. There's also some underground utility issues. It's all clay sanitary sewer. You know, and we had just last summer, emergency repair and a collapsed pipe up near the north end of Main Street, where we went in and lined that to prevent a full failure of that. So infrastructure-wise, it's due. You know, the other huge value here is really the connection and continuation of the other projects. On the right-hand side of the screen there, you see a map that just shows the commitment that we've had to county-state aid projects in the last, you know, I'll call it seven years since 2014, starting there with Kingsway, CASA 35, obviously, all of the emphasis and discussion on CASA 22. That's in red. But then not losing the capture of CASA 26, which is that east block of Ferry, that's going to be completed this year. And then, you know, bringing up here in the purple, CASA 36, which is planned for next year. And so it's really, you know, I think the map is powerful in depicting and displaying this unprecedented city-county partnership that the city of Lee Sewer has. And I said the last, you know, 10 years, but really in the last seven, maybe eight if you count next year. But so I think just, it shows really a, almost a full capture of all the CASA route, Stanley Sewer, and, you know, bringing those to a full reconstruction. So I think it's a pretty powerful kind of continuation and final segment of that effort, if you don't mind, Jasper. So just to, you know, reemphasize a little bit more on this commitment, has been in the city-county projects. And it says 2014 here, and on the left side, you'll see the total commitment from the two agencies. So just short of $30 million commitment over that period of time. And I think what's really powerful in this graph is it, you know, it's almost an equal split. And the 36 project has a little skew on that. But it's really acknowledgement that, you know, for every dollar, the city and county are contributing. There's almost a two-to-one payback, you know. So there's no way that the amount of roads being approved could be done by any one agency. So I think it's that really, you know, feeling to that mutual benefit, the emphasis that the county's put in Lee Sewer, and then the reciprocal of the city being willing to invest and replace that underground infrastructure. On the right-hand side then is just a capture of the size of the projects, really getting greater every year since the first one in 2014, being the CASA 35. So just think a powerful graphic to indicate, you know, the effort that's been made. And, you know, in talking with the county and the solidifying of this memo of understanding, this is really the final segment. You know, the county's committed, you know, communicated that this will be the last segment, at least for what, you know, we foresee as being the next 10-year period. But really, I think it puts us in a good position, puts the county roads in a good position. You know, and the county will have to attend to some other county needs, other municipalities in the county. And I think they've made that very clear. So this is, this is a well-timed opportunity to complete that really final segment that's in need of attention. If you don't mind, Jasper. So from a project cost standpoint, we've got a little bit going on just with the county CASA, and then also some of these local, you know, added-on projects. But when it comes to the county-state aid portion, the 36 portion, it's going to very closely mimic CASA 22, the turnback, where if you see on the top row there, the roadway costs, that's all going to be covered by the county. So that'd be all county cost and responsibility. The storm sewer is really solidified at a 55-45 split, 55 being the county, 45 being the city. And then you see that also on the second row then, then from Ferry Street. So I've got those two broken off for you, the two different segments. Obviously, Main Street's longer, so that makes a lot of sense there, that that cost is greater than Ferry. And then on the third row, you see there's some 100% city participation items, 100% city cost. Ferry Street there, that's the capture of that one-block segment between the intersection of South Main and Ferry, and then to the west parking lot. So just a couple hundred feet stretched there. Then on the fourth row down, the west parking lot, we're calling it, you see also, that's 100% city cost. And you see a cost associated with that being the street and the storm. And then the bottom capture there is really the non-participating pieces, not specific to any one of those. So within the roadway cost, we've got some streetscape costs that we're capturing to maybe bring some of the aesthetic amenities and streetscaping features down South Main from the project we're completing this summer, as well as continuing east on Ferry. And we have a little bit of an allowance there to continue some of that, to be determined what those final features are, but wanted to capture some of the cost. We have a little storm sewer cost there, and then really the bulk of these non-participating or city costs for CASA projects is in the sewer and water and the electrical. And so we have a sizable amount of that with, under the county-state aid portion, obviously, full sanitary and water being that urban and city-supported services, and as well as some electrical conversions that we're hoping to capture in this project improvement as well. So all that sums at the very bottom for an estimated construction total of just short of $9 million, that 8.8 estimated at this time. And one thing to point out, when we're doing feasibility reports, we do bring a contingency through on this project. We have a 20%. So the hope always is to capture conservatively the project cost and be able to hone in and work it down from here. But something worth of note, and it's pretty clear in the feasibility report as well. If you don't mind, Jasper.
Corey, can I interject real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Sullivan.
I just am curious, back on those estimates, how with today's pricing, how accurate are those numbers? I know you're building a 20% in, but just out of curiosity.
Yeah, it's a really good question. So I'll be honest in that, when we finalized this feasibility report, we went back through and we updated, we updated things based on the costs that we had been experiencing here this year. So these numbers have a contingency, but they're also been reviewed and adjusted based on some of the real costs that we've been experiencing here, you know, through the bidding environment 2021, so.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was wondering.
Yep, you're welcome. It's a good question. So financing, this is specific to the city portion. The county portion will come from probably a combination of some remaining turnback funds, as well as some of their state aid account funds, and potentially bonding here, just depending on how the county is able to fully allocate their responsibility. But from a city side, we're going to be looking at a number of different sources. Utility enterprise funds is always a huge piece of what we do for our CFP projects, you know, starting with the sanitary water and storm sewer, those three enterprise funds. And then we have a general fund commitment here with some of the Ferry and parking lot improvements. We do have a roadway cost. And so there is a general fund or general tax levy commitment. And then, of course, the special assessment, the chapter 429. You see on the right-hand side of the graphic there, you know, the staying consistent and true to the policy, special assessing the adjacent benefiting properties. We're in the process of completing that benefit appraisal, very consistent to the 22 project. I think we also are expecting consistent assessment rates. And so we'll be, you know, working through and completing that process as well. And within the feasibility report, working with Shannon, we did develop a preliminary bonding schedule to show, you know, we will be securing a bond for this project, and so giving some projection of that debt service and, you know, an estimated interest rate to give just a sense of awareness for that. If you don't mind, Jasper. So then, you know, looking out then and breaking this down really by agency, felt that that was pretty powerful to start to, you know, show that total commitment, both city and county. So a little bit busy of a table there on the upper right, but really trying to capture the cost responsibility of the county, you know, looking at that construction cost, and then understanding that there's a delivery cost to this. So really breaking that out and identifying that total commitment of about 4.6 million for the county. Again, you know, very, very focused on the roadway and the storm sewer, and this is a county for those cost splits. And then looking out at the city of Lee Sewer, which is on the lower side of that table, you know, again, the construction cost. In this project, we have some roadway costs, so just, you know, showing that and emphasizing that based on, again, that west Ferry and the parking lot and some of that allowance for streetscape, our storm sewer split, and then picking up the sanitary water and electric, bringing then, you know, the total city portion of, you know, just over 5.6 for a total commitment of project around that 10-3 number. So that 8-8 construction still holds, but then you're adding in your delivery cost. Working with Shannon, then we projected out this cost. It's included in the CIP, but we did have some escalation of numbers. So we went through and we analyzed the impact. From a property standpoint, there is some obligation of the general levy. But then, you know, as part of our planning for these projects, there's an acknowledgement that we've got this covered, a budgetary number of around $400,000. So we would be utilizing that now, maybe reducing some of our maintenance and being able to allocate some of that to cover the commitments of this reconstruction project. Water rates, looking at a levy, a debt, I guess, a debt service, excuse me, just shy of $100,000 there. And we have been talking about water in these last couple of projects with the water tower in South Main. And that 3% increase over what we projected at a 2%, that would still hold and cover this. So maintaining that 3% there. And then sanitary sewer, I think we all have an awareness that that fund is probably the least available to capture added debt. And so it's been, you know, a recommendation from Shannon to apply special assessments to offset the impact to sanitary sewer rates. And we did that as part of the 22 project as well. We'd recommend that consistently here again. And really just getting that sanitary sewer to that 2027 time when that wastewater plant debt falls off. So it's just trying to best manage that. And then storm sewer, we've got a rate increase through 2025. That's, I guess, not unexpected for a relatively young enterprise fund, but will have some impact based on the storm sewer need for a street utility project. And then, you know, consistent message again is that, you know, the CIP is a live, active document. This is a CIP project. And we knew, we do understand it and are committed to reassessing this to make sure that those impacts are manageable and maybe even, you know, could be maintained as static of what the adopted CIP was. But it will require reprioritization, and we'd like to start that process here in the next couple of months to just to fully, I guess, appreciate the impact that some of these project costs have had on it. So then, next steps, you know, where we go from here. So tonight is the acceptance of the feasibility report. As part of that, we would also ask and is recommended that you set a date for the improvement hearing. And really, that's our first touch point. That's mandated by the 429 process for the residents and the public. We like to take it a step further and have a voluntary open neighborhood or open house that's really doesn't have the formality of an improvement hearing. It's not held at a council meeting setting. And, you know, talking with Jasper and try to strategize maybe an opportunity to hold that in person. We think that'd be a tremendous value to the project. We're going to try to hold that in about another, I guess, six weeks and try to hold that in June. Or kind of dub it in an open-air open house. We'd like to do it at the library parking lot. We just really think there's a lot of value in being able to do that in person. We'd be able to social distance. Hopefully, the weather would cooperate, give us some warmer temps. And so we're putting a lot of emphasis on that, that June 9th open house. We would mail neighborhood meeting invites for that. Those would go out then about mid-May. And then following that open house, neighborhood meeting then would be the improvement hearing, and we'd like to propose to hold that then in June. That would just give us time to do the neighborhood meeting beforehand, and then the public improvement hearing, that is a mandated step, and that would be at a council meeting. And so, you know, we've done, we did the improvement hearing consistent with the 22 project. And it's a place where the public can voice concern or support for a project. And then that improvement hearing really sets the table and sets the tone for council then to proceed, to order the project and proceeding that final plan, that final design. And we've been, we started a process in '22 where we delayed a meeting just to receive that full feedback from the improvement hearing, allow council and everyone to digest and assess. And then we come back the next meeting and make that decision. Just seems a little bit more respectful to that feedback being shared that we take some time to consider it. So we would make that order of the project then on July 12th. And then there's some steps in between. They're all captured in the feasibility report. I just kind of summarized, wanted to make sure. Wanted to make sure that we call the light that we would have another meeting as final design progresses towards the end of the project, just to follow up on any concerns and be able to share the, you know, the the detail, the final design, we'd do that later in the fall. And then we would uh open bids hopefully in in September, uh, February to to gear ourselves up for a twenty twenty-two project. And then um just wanted to also identify that, and we found, I think, a good amount of of uh, you know, positive and successfulness with doing the assessment hearing after construction. I'll be, I'll be honest, probably the benefit appraisal is gonna gonna require that just because of the timing that it takes to develop that report. Um, but we would then look at that September twenty twenty-two timeframe for assessments. Um, which is a very similar time for the twenty-two project that we did, so. Um, think that that works pretty well, and uh there's an, there's, there's a second uh hearing, and that's the the assessment hearing, that's mandated by four twenty-nine. Um, so that'd be the second hearing at a council, a council setting. Um, that's, that's what we'd capture in in September of next year. You don't mind Jasper? Um, so then, you know, really where that brings us then tonight is is um, I'm happy to answer any questions, the report was long, we we put a lot of thought into it. Um, and really study like studying this corridor, so I'd be happy to answer any questions to get any any detail as as much as required or desired, but um, really looking for that action tonight to approve a resolution, which is the the official acceptance of that feasibility report. And then within the resolution is the ordering of that hearing for that June twenty-eighth date. Um, for the thirty-six uh cassa thirty-six improvement project. So with that, I'd I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'd be happy to address anything further.
Mayor Kirby, I believe you're muted.
I'm sorry about that, I was. Um, any, any questions for our um city engineer Bean Feng or more um general questions or um city administrator Krugel, anything?
Mayor Kirby, members of the council.
Yes, sir.
Jasper, is now the time to have a conversation with that west parking lot or?
Yeah, sure, uh, if I, if I may, Mayor and uh City Council, I'll kind of give a little update about that parking lot. Um, I don't know if anybody's looked at it on Beacon, uh, to kind of look at where the property lines are, but um, it's kind of really cut up, uh, there's, there's a a pathway basically that is right-of-way that the city has. Uh, the city owns an oddball uh parcel within that uh uh area, but then also um uh FFM Bank owns probably the majority of it. I'd say it's probably about fifty percent, it's probably about sixty forty right now, sixty percent uh FFM owning it. Um, I've been discussing with FFM a a path to kind of clean that up, um, and really um identifying what what their goals are, what our goals are. Um, there's, there's a need for some improvements in that parking lot, it's it's in kind of rough shape. Um, and and really, um, you know, having an option for people to park or a location that's public that people can park and and access the the new mall area as well is is a priority. Um, so I've been, I've been discussing that with with FFM uh to be able to come up with a solution for that area. As you see it on there, and you're probably wondering, well, why is that on there? We don't own it. Um, we own about forty percent of it, but what we're trying to do is is uh is come up with a solution that allows FFM to keep um, you know, between eighteen and twenty parking stalls, um, so they have dedicated parking for their area, and then the rest would go uh to the city and um, in turn, there would be a maintenance agreement for those areas, so we're we're trying to, we're trying to work out the details of that. Um, any agreements that we have would be brought forward to City Council uh to be approved. Uh, but really what that would do is that would clean up that area, um, it would allow for some public parking back there, and then it would also improve that parking lot with this project. So um more to, more to come with that, um, as far as uh City Council engagement, but what we're trying to do is just try to make that a a better, better area and just kind of clean it up so that we have um, kind of uh a a knowledge of of who's doing what in that area.
Okay, and then my other question, Jasper, in regards to the feasibility study with the asphalt for that back parking lot. Did you get any answers in regards to the four-inch back there?
I did, um, in in uh Corey can touch base on it a little bit, uh, but what what I've gathered is that if we want to build it beefier, we can, but most parking lots are all four-inch uh four-inch lifts, so two, two, two-inch lifts of asphalt. Um, so I'll let Corey, I don't know, Corey, if you want to inter- interject anything in there um about the 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 design standard for that parking lot?
Yeah, I can, I I, yeah, I think, I think it's a very, you know, very supportive design, the, I think we had the four-on-ten. Um, you know, Second Street is is five-on-twelve. Um, I I think what I'd share is that, you know, as we develop and we get the geotech analysis, the soil borings, you know, we we can definitely build that that parking lot beefier. Um, you know, ten-ton doesn't always have to be just in the vituminous either, so I'd say four inches is the minimum. You know, does, does it support five? I mean, to put in perspective, we're putting five on on cassa twenty-two and cassa thirty-six, so. You know, maybe, maybe the best approach isn't through the vituminous, maybe we, we add some additional aggregate. Um, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's any, any, any harm in building that to ten-ton, it's just trying to be mindful of the affordability and the economics, but um, it's a good observation, you know, Marvin, and I know Scott had the same thing, I I don't think it's decided. Um, I don't think we're far off, um, but if if we want to make a strategic decision during final design uh to 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 beef that up, I I think our twenty percent contingency allows for some of those those decisions as we advance in the project, so.
Okay, yeah, and I and I appreciate that, Corey, I I just, you know, seeing the truck, you know, because there is truck traffic back there, just dropping, making deliveries and stuff, that was my only concern is long-term. And hearing what you're saying, I I agree, I just, just thought I'd ask the question.
Understood, it's a good one.
Anybody else? With that, I I will entertain any motions, staff is recommending the following, that the City Council adopt the attached resolution R twenty twenty-one dash zero two-three, accepting the feasibility report and ordering a public improvement hearing for June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one on the cassa thirty-six improvement project.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Second, Sullivan.
Councilmember Lozey and then Councilmember Sullivan seconded it. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Administrator Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, uh, Councilmember Krugman.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozey.
Aye.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Swanberg. Uh, Councilmember Swanberg.
Sorry, I was muted, aye.
And then Mayor Kirby.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to regular agenda item six B. Uh, code amendment, chapter thirty-three, second reading.
Mayor Kirby, this is Member Sullivan. Hey, can I back up once? I actually have one question pertaining to the last item that I missed.
Certainly.
Jasper, can you, is there no cost benefit to those properties that are owned by First Farmers to be included in that? Cost benefit appraisal?
Um, so are are you asking about the the parking lot FFM properties?
No, I I guess with the storm sewer and the other items that were going back on the properties.
Yep.
Is there no cost benefit to those properties as well, like the bank? Or, I guess, Anderson Law Office Building, I don't know what it's called there?
Yep, alright, so I think you're referring to um like a assessments, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so um our assessment policy right now states that uh we only assess properties that are directly adjacent to. Um, so the the project uh, the project extent doesn't have it going by directly that that building. Um, you know, Anderson uh Law Office or the FFM Bank at at South Main. Um, we made the decision to not uh assess for the South Main project, because we did receive three thousand dollars uh in grants. So we made that decision not to assess them on that project, and for this project, this cassa thirty-six, um, they're not directly adjacent to the project extent, so so they're not on the assessment roll.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, moving back again to item six B, code amendment, chapter thirty-three, second reading, Administrator Krugel, you want to take us uh down that road?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of council, uh, what we have tonight, uh, we have uh Community Development Director DiMaggio walk you through the second reading uh potentially of this code amendment for chapter thirty-three, which is related to some of the functions of the Planning Commission. Um, you'll see the 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 following agenda item is actually to update some of those procedures. Um, so with that, I'll I'll turn it over to uh Community Development Director DiMaggio to present on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kirby, members of the council. As Jasper said tonight, we are going to ask you to waive the second reading of chapter thirty-three. The Planning Commission drafted a policy and procedure manual that was adopted by the City Council in February of twenty nineteen. As part of this document, they ask that it gets reviewed annually. Uh, this year, when the Planning Commission was doing their annual review, they realized that some portions of the chapter thirty-three actually referenced what the the actual procedures and policies of the Planning Commission were supposed to be. And unfortunately, those two documents were not in sync with each other. Um, so we went through and staff updated chapter thirty-three to reflect the Planning Commission's policy and procedure manual and what the actual role of the poli- or the Planning Commission is. Um, you waived the first reading on April twelfth, twenty nineteen. So tonight, staff is asking that you waive the second reading of chapter thirty-three and that you adopt ordinance five ninety-one and resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero two-one. I'm not sure if you have any questions of staff?
I have no questions at this time, anybody else? Nothing? If not, uh, I will entertain any motions. Um, staff recommends the City Council waive the second reading of the chapter thirty-three updates and adopt ordinance five nine-one and resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero two-one. With that, I'll entertain any motions.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Krugman, I so move.
Yes, sir, thank you, Councilmember Krugman. And Councilmember Mahoney seconded it. Uh, any other discussion, concerns, comments? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Administrator Krugel to take a roll.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, uh, Councilmember Krugman.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozey.
Aye.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Kirby.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, lastly, regular agenda item six C, Planning Commission Policy and Procedures. I'll allow Administrator Krugel to introduce uh Ms. DiMaggio.
Yep, uh, thank you very much, Mayor Kirby, members of City Council, um, as mentioned before, this is the the actual update to the policies and procedures uh that this, that the Planning Commission follows, um, and we do have Ms. DiMaggio here as well to to present on those changes for City Council uh considerations. So I will turn it over to the Community Development Director DiMaggio.
Thank you, Jasper, Mayor Kirby, members of the council, as you will see on the document, um, when we were reviewing the document this January, there was actually some changes that the Planning Commission recommended be made. And so I thought it may makes more sense to actually update chapter thirty-three and then go back and update the policy and procedure manual. This request that they're having or they're asking, or actually just to make things a little bit more flexible. Um, for instance, in section four, adoption of plan, it says on or before February fifteenth of each year, or excuse me, December fifteenth of each year, we've actually moved that to February fifteenth of each year, just to give the commission a little bit more flexibility. Um, if for something, you know, similar to what COVID would happen in the future, where we may be unable to get a meeting going right away, just to offer them a little bit of flexibility. So what they've asked, there's three sections, the recommended changes, they were section four, five, and six. Section four is um, it originally it said December and a verbal report and of the current year. We're actually asking that that be moved to February fifteenth of each year, and that they will submit to you a City Council report of its work during the previous calendar year. So that will give them just a little bit more time to organize everything and get it ready to be brought to you. Section five, it says that um annual review, this policy shall be reviewed annually by the Planning Commission at its first meeting of the calendar year. Um, we were actually asking to change that to its first regular meeting of the calendar year. Just in case there was some type of special meeting that needs to be held, we wanted to make sure that this is actually the first regular meeting. And then section six, annual meetings, the annual meetings of the Planning Commission will be at the first regular um, oh, I'm sorry, I accidentally crossed up meeting, but it's supposed to be first regular meeting of the calendar year. So um, those would be the changes, before it said in the month of January, we're asking that it be changed to the first regular meeting of the calendar year. And as I said, these will actually then mirror what you've just adopted with uh chapter thirty-three, ordinance five ninety-one. Do you have any questions of me? If not, I think the next page shows the recommendation, we're asking that you approve the modifications to the Planning Commission's policy and procedure manual. And then we'll get that out to everyone and put it on the Planning Commission website. So everyone's aware of the changes.
Thank you, uh, Community Development Director DiMaggio. If nobody has any questions, any out there at all? Otherwise, you see the action requested in front of you, staff recommends the City Council approve the modifications to the Plan, Commission, Policy, and Procedure Manual. With that, I will entertain any motions.
So, members, second.
First, um, member, Councilmember Sullivan seconded, any other comments, concerns, questions? If not, I'll turn it over to Administrator Krugel to take a roll.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, uh, Councilmember Krugman.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozey.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmembers Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Kirby.
Aye.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll uh close the meeting with some uh comments and reports, items of appreciation with our council members, any commission reports, anything you want to share with us, this is your opportunity. This is your platform, and we will start with Councilmember Krugman.
I have nothing to re- nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Krugman, moving on to Councilmember Lozey. Nothing yet either.
Nope.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahoney.
I don't have anything to report tonight.
Thank you, moving on to Councilmember Schleter.
Region nine development, there was a full board meeting on April twenty-fourth, lots of reports, and the only thing to note is I was approved as one of the new commissioners. HRA, we had a special meeting last Friday to review the applications for the new director. We looked at over a dozen applications, we forwarded three of them, and there will be interviews tomorrow on those. Hopefully, we can make a decision by Wednesday on who to hire. And there will be a lease or county officials meeting Wednesday at the Justice Center in Lee Center, and that will be in person.
Thank you, Councilmember Schleter, anything else? Moving on to Councilmember Sullivan, if you have anything to share with us.
Just a quick update from EDA tonight, we did approve two revolving loan funds, uh, loans for businesses in town. Uh, one was for the cafe, um, Luke's Cafe, which is down on South Main Street, will be opening hopefully this fall. And then one for the mall to repair an elevator. So that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, Councilmember uh Swanberg, do you have anything you want to share with us?
Just one item of appreciation, and I did share this with Chief Kelly today, uh, situation arose, uh, my family where we needed some police assistance, and the two officers involved were outstanding, um, extremely professional. Um, and I just, I can't say enough of good things about how they handled the situation, and I believe it's a true reflection of their leader, Chief Kelly, so I'm very appreciative of the work they do in our community.
Thank you very much, always good to hear about uh some some good uh confidence in our men in blue and women in blue. Um, moving on to myself, I don't have too much to report, I'll be kind of brief, I have a I have a Ridgeview Hospital Board Meeting tomorrow at three o'clock. I'll give a short review, review on that at our next meeting. Um, I do believe we have a personnel and budget meeting Wednesday at one-thirty, am I correct, uh, uh, Mr. Krugel?
Uh, it's, it's actually on Tuesday, so it's tomorrow at one-thirty.
Thank you very much. And, uh, lastly, uh, I and, um, um, Councilmember, uh, Liam Mahoney attended, uh, Arbor Day, Earth Day celebration over at Park Elementary Friday at one-thirty. That was, uh, that was, um, rather interesting. It was, it was good that we were there and, and, uh, I believe St. Anne's is having the same celebration at their school this Friday at one-thirty also. So any council people that want to be a part of that, please, please do. That's all I have. I'm going to end with, uh, uh, Administrator Krugel, anything you want to share?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. Uh, we do have that Personnel and Budget Committee meeting tomorrow at one-thirty. Um, Noel and I also have an MMPA meeting tomorrow morning, uh, that I believe we'll both be attending. And then, uh, I don't know if people have noticed, but we're doing a monthly editorial in the paper, um, that we're kind of rotating, uh, director level positions. And this next one that'll be coming out, not this week, but, um, I believe next week, or it might actually be this week, sorry. Um, in the, in the paper will, will be one from our, uh, Police Department. So if you haven't noticed, take a look, uh, it's both online and, uh, and on, in the actual paper. So, um, good stuff, uh, it seems like, uh, it's well received by the public and also the, the newspaper. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much for, uh, all your input tonight, uh, Administrator Krugel, you're very helpful. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion to, uh, dismiss the meeting.
Krugman so move.
Thank you, Councilmember Krugman.
Lose second.
We got several who seconded, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone, I'll see you all in a couple of weeks. Thank you.